Helped up Mr. Webber today. And I can't say screw this.
I thought about it. I'm sitting there thinking. You didn't go to the cloud. See, I have a buddy mine here.
Yeah, Bill does this video. He's listening to this. And he can watch me too. Bill posts it when I get it tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
You know, just do the whole section.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, five hundred and fifty dollars. Both of them.
They had to. See the covolunteer themselves, we were on shovel it?
No.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, City Council meeting in order. Kelly, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santi?
Here.
Alderman Glab?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Condon?
Here.
Mayor Jeff?
Here. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? No public comment. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Alderman Santi has asked to pull five B as in boys, so we'll be pulling that item. Is there any other items that the council would like to pull for separate consideration? See none? I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda item five A, five C through F. Alderman Curry?
Go root.
Second? Alderman Santi?
Oh, second.
Discussion on these items? Kelly, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The item that was pulled by Alderman Santi was five B regarding the ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of McHenry and the Fox Waterway Agency for the Boom Creek dredging project. I am looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Santi?
I will make the motion for consent agenda item five B as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Maddick?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Alderman Santi?
Yeah, real quickly, number one, this is... I believe that this is fantastic, this is coming through. I know the foundation over the years has discussed this item. It's been inexpensive. They really could not handle underneath the budget of what they have. And for this to come through and the Fox Waterway Agency to step forward is just a big positive for that area and for the Green Street area. Couple of quick things is I know we're only allowed, or the Fox Waterway is only allowing us to the Green Street Bridge. If we were to look at doing the dredging from the Green Street Bridge following a curve heading north to the Route one twenty bridge, is that a possibility? And is there any idea of what the extra cost would be with something? I'm working on those costs right now, Alderman Santi, and I'm working on three different options. There's an option where we bring a private, it'll be a private contractor that comes in the Fox Waterway, will not do anything in this area. But I've already made contact with a private contractor that would be able to do that. In three areas, they would either truck it, them trucking it themselves, similar to the Fox Waterway, we truck it, we pay for the truck independently. Or the third one is utilizing a hydraulic dredging process that has the geo tubes or geo bags, where they pump it out and then the de-water is on site. So those, I'm looking at the cost on those three options. This gentleman was formerly associated with the Fox Waterway, so there's an existing relationship there as well. So it, we would have to bring in a different contractor to get that section done? Yes. Okay. Is there any kind of deadline that we're looking at then in regards to if we do them, I don't know how to say it, we're doing them in tandem with each other, or one follows up with the other? Is there any deadline between now and when the Fox Waterway starts? Where if we can do this secondary portion, would we have to get this approved by the council or just get the ball rolling? What, how much time do we have? And expenditure, even the expenditure for, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but even the expenditure for us trucking the material for the Fox Water Agency, there's going to be some cost that has to be council approved. It makes sense for us to try, if we do it mechanically dredging in this next section, to do it all like in, at the same time, whether they do it before them, or ready before them, or they do it right after. So if this, we're using, utilizing the same trucking company, we stage it all together and we'll go to the same spot? How will we decide to do that, what there will be costs associated with it?
Yeah, we have, just to follow up on that, the cost for the trucking that we have estimated, and that was estimated by Director Schmidt based on the volume of dredging material that the Fox Water provided to us that they thought they'd be taking out. And then how much can go on a semi-load, a truck and all that? So it was, so the trucking amount was estimated by Director Schmidt. So we would have that cost and that, which we've already estimated. And then the cost for this, as, and we do it as, we do it as two separate items, so it wouldn't have to be all as one depending on the cost, but that would be, those would be costs, it would be included in the budget, CIP, and then the budget process. So, you know, we're not looking at starting the dredging, the Fox Waterway dredging until May first or after May first. They understand that we either have to do a budget amendment for it, or that it has to be included in our budget process, that we can't just approve it right now and start paying for it. Fox Waterway understands that. So any expenditure of funds for either the Fox Waterway project or the West, West Boom dredging would have to come back to council for approval.
Thank you, no further questions.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, assuming that the material, the dredging goes to the South West Water Treatment property, well, what, and we've had some discussion, it could be another outlet, but what happens eventually? What's the ultimate, I mean, it doesn't stay there forever, right? It's de-watered and then?
Well, it takes about a year to dry out, right? And then we could maybe use it for, you know, topsoil, for black dirt, depending on the quality of material.
Is there any EPA or DNR restrictions on, on the material? I mean, sometimes, I don't know that that applies here, but sometimes when you do things like that, you get worried about heavy metals and all sorts of different things that might collect in silks.
Not that I'm aware of. Right now, we purchase all our black dirt from the Fox River Agency out of Fox Lake.
Yeah.
Landscaping.
And the contractors I spoke to, they had a provided an option to, that they could, they would, an option to not haul it there, they would haul it to a place in Boulder where they sift it and then they sell it themselves.
So, yeah, but, I mean, as long as it's, yeah, some can be used, I mean, we've talked about some other positive outlets for it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just want to say that although I would take a vote yes for this only because of the fact that we don't, they're the biggest brunt of it, the project, I still have a lot of reservations of the fact that, I remember the McCullough Lake dredging that the city did many years ago. And it was fantastic what they did as far as the trench they built it, and I know it's only about three or four years later that everything filled back in from the silt. And what's going to happen with the east end if the west end that Alderman Santi brought up between Green and one twenty isn't done, and actually not just to one twenty, but all the way to the mouth of the lagoon? Because all this could possibly just filter right in and fill, maybe not the whole thing back up, but part of it. So I really think that we need to look at it, and I'm not saying it's going to happen overnight. So I think if this happens in the spring or summer this next year, that within another year or two, the city's going to have to move on the rest of it. And then it has to look at the tributaries that feed in there, Lakeland Park Drainage Way, but more, or even more importantly, I think is the Boom Creek area, because I think that's where a lot of the silt is going to come in. And again, I, it's not something that we're going to do overnight, but I think over a period of time, all those issues need to be resolved, otherwise all you're doing is wasting good money to what seems like a good project at the time, but will it be a longstanding end result, or is it just going to be for the first year or two and then things will start deteriorating again? So I just, again, think we need to look at it comprehensive for down the road.
We agree with you. Just one of the things, I just want to just, I guess, follow up on that point, that's helped us out quite a bit right now, is the fact, like next to the Riverwalk, when we put the aerators in, it actually keeps that water moving. You know, that current can either come in from the river and stagnate and drop its silt right there. Having circulators all the way along there, kind of keeping, pushing that current has helped us. So possibly even looking at something along that, along that from one twenty to Green Street as well, so that you keep that water moving. It obviously doesn't solve the issues farther back in the tributaries, but in that part right there, it certainly is something that we would take a look at and consider.
Right, well, the more water you move, the more silt you're going to move as well. And again, when we talk Boom Creek, I probably have the best visual on anybody here because it's right around the corner from me. As far as, we're back in seventy-eight, they built the dam as a silt catcher, and it was never maintained as a catch basin. And it's now slowly turning into a mud hole that is getting all the way up to where that dam is, and so it's really not serving its purpose anymore to hold that silt back, which means it's running down through Boom Creek and eventually making it into the lagoon. Again, like I said, it's not something that we look at, that we're going to be able to solve in the next year or two, but something that we have as far as a comprehensive plan for down in the next few years as far as getting things done. So that as we, as we do section A, we don't want to be working on section C as section A deteriorates. We want to be proactive and not reactive on the project. That's all I got.
Alderman Schaefer?
Does the FWA have their own engineers, or do they use the Army Corps for sole things like this, you know? Do they have engineers on staff?
I think that they do. I don't think that they utilize Army Corps. I think they do with all of that in-house, at least when they, when we partnered with them to do the boat launch, the Charles Miller Boat Launch, they handled all of that. We didn't have to have a study ahead of time to say, here's what we want to do, and here's what, here's how much we want to be removed. They handled, they handled that.
So my point in that question is, have they made any comments to anybody here on staff regarding just doing this portion and what that's going to mean? Do they feel they're throwing good money at bed and it's going to fill up? What did their engineers say?
The only conversations that we've had is that it's been on their, I guess, to-do list for a long time, and they understand how it has silted in, that there is an issue there. But in terms of throwing money away, you know, I think it's, sometimes it's that perpetual process with them, that they're constantly dredging and always, there's just that red blood of trying to get those done, that because of those areas that are continually silted in, so if we can provide this model, utilize this model, help them out, and then it becomes our issue to kind of manage it at that point. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, maybe using the Fox Waterway Agency connections and everything else, maybe they can look around to see if, you know, whether it's for Boom Creek, Lakeland Park Drainage or whatever, if there aren't some grant monies out there for, because not only is that as far as looking at fixing the problem of the silt running into the lagoon, is as far as the fact that as more development comes along that creek, that creek has to hold so much water as far as runoff, and if we get, you know, that area dredged out with a lot of help from grant monies or whatever, you know, we can look at it as it's not just solving that one issue, but other issues, and maybe there's grant monies for something else. So, and again, like I say, maybe the Fox Waterway Agency might have more connections and know a lot more about that as far as what's available.
Any other discussion? Kelly, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is a adoption of a resolution reducing certain cash donations for the Lincoln Hill subdivision through September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Ross, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. To date, City Council has approved a reduction of fees for the following subdivisions covered by annexation agreements, Oaks and Irish Prairie Liberty Trails, Patriot Estates, and Legend Lakes. Lincoln Hills is the final subdivision under a current annexation agreement considered for reduction of impact fees. However, the entity at which the annexation agreement was executed with no longer exists due to foreclosure. Therefore, in order to provide the same reduction of fees for the five remaining lots in the subdivision, staff is asking council to approve a reduction in fees through a resolution. Also, in front of you is a new resolution, there was a typo in there where it referred to the wrong paragraph in the original annexation agreement, so this is the updated resolution. Any questions? Be happy to answer them. My dad, this is really no different, except it's through a resolution. The other subdivisions that we did, we did through an amendment to the annexation agreement, and that was because you had developers pretty much making a substantial financial contribution in buying the remaining lots in the subdivisions. Here, we're talking about five lots, and there's not a developer, they're all privately owned, so the resolution, we can do a simple resolution kind of easier. And I think Attorney Cahill here will be happy to expand on that if she needs to.
Thanks, Ross. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Question, is this something that we're just doing, or have the owners actually approached us?
I have been approached by one owner out there, yes.
By one? So I mean, this is something we'd normally, we would go ahead and do this even though the landowner really hasn't asked for it, at least on four of these lots, apparently.
Actually, two of them they've asked for it, but when we originally presented the reduction, or was asking council for reduction, this was one of those subdivisions, one of the five, that we were, that we wanted to, you know, present the reduction for.
Yeah, I just, I think, and I guess my comment is that in the other, which are under annexation agreements, of course, that we modified or amended, in those cases, it was a petitioner each time, right?
The developer, the owner of the lots, or the potential?
Right, the developer came to us wanting that.
Right, and I actually, the gentleman sitting in the front row over here is the gentleman that is waiting to see if he can get a reduction.
Oh, well, and I haven't, and again, I don't have a problem with it. My question, you know, if somebody's approaching, just like the others did, they're approaching us, asking for that benefit that we, that is potentially out there for them, I guess my, my little sticking point here is that it sounds like, okay, three landowners actually haven't asked for it. Why would we just do it?
No, I've had, I've had two ask for it, or at least...
Is that two lots or is that?
Two lots, two lots, there's only five lots.
Right, so the other three have not?
No, they have not.
Okay, so I guess that's my question is, normally we do things unless we're approached. And the gentleman here, I have no problem with, because he's approached us, so.
Right, I mean, I would rather, I mean, instead of bringing five different time, coming to council for five different occasions, when, I would rather just do them all upfront, and if they don't do it by September twenty-fourth, then they don't get a reduction. If it was a hundred different privately owned lots, I could see where that might be. But at least this has given me the opportunity, and look, ultimately, I'd love for all five of those lots to be built out this year. I mean, and that's the hopes of this, it's kind of an incentive for these, for these owners to step forward and say, hey, you reduced them, bring them to build a house.
The whole idea was an incentive for all of them, you know?
Right.
With the developers that we dealt with before, but I guess it just seems a little strange to me that we would just do it without even being asked. I guess we'll agree to disagree on that one. I just don't, I mean, I don't have a big problem with, you know, if somebody comes up next week and we vote on another one on an individual lot, you know, two weeks from now, you know, and see what the issue is.
Wouldn't it be a good thing to have the other owners of these properties realize that they can build on these properties and start developing these properties quicker? I mean, that's the whole point of this whole thing, is to really get development. And that's why we really did this anyway.
Alderman Condon?
I, just to add upon that, just like the other subdivisions that we've approved for this, they may not all be developed either, because again, the permits have to be pulled by September twenty-fourth, is it, yeah, the twenty-fourth of next year. So it's, it's kind of the same, in that respect, that they may not all be utilized either. And again, the whole point of this reduction was to have a completion to these subdivisions that have been started years ago before the economy crashed, so I'm very supportive. The other comment I wanted to make too, though, was that at first I questioned why it was September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, for all of them. Now I'm very glad, in retrospect, I really appreciate that fact, number one, for simplicity for staff, it's going to be, they know the dead, that dropped dead date, and it's going to be across the board, and it's up to the owners of those properties to utilize that within a time period. Again, that was one of, I think, the concessions that, to me, made it truly an incentive package, that there was a time limit to it, and it was just to kind of spearhead some development completion, so I think it makes sense to do it. And thank you to staff for having that, that date.
Thank you. Any, Alderman Glab?
Yeah, just for, kind of an ad update, I guess, more of a refresher. On these reduction of annexation agreements, did we do an ordinance for that? As far as till next year?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen?
Yes.
So the individuals outside of those annexation agreements just automatically can come in for that reduction, correct? Throughout the city?
The non, the non-annexation agreement. Lots.
Yeah, so, let's say, I know on Meadow there's an empty lot, if somebody bought that and they wanted to build, they could...
Actually, that homeowner, that landowner contacted me already because of the reductions.
Okay. All right, I was just curious.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Curry?
Okay, just to follow up on that, so, yeah, any landowner that, in the city, that's not under an annexation agreement today, gets reduced fees based on that prior ordinance, right? Now, those fees were higher or lower than what these, most of these other ones that were under annexation agreements? Our standard fees, in other words, how did they compare?
The standard fees are lower.
So, okay, and then we cut them in half until September twenty-fourth? So the individual landowner not under an annexation actually is going to get a quote-unquote better deal? I mean, it's going to be a lower number?
It's a lower number.
God, friggin' better deal. It's going to be a lower number.
It's a lower number, yes.
All right, all right, thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
Just for clarification on my end too, is this subdivision like similar to the other ones we've done too? Is there remaining infrastructure, or is there any infrastructure out there? Is it all complete?
It's all completed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? This time open up for public comment, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment on this item?
Appreciate you both now. I'll be in Wednesday if you say yes.
We appreciate that. At this time, looking for a motion to approve six A, adoption of a resolution reducing certain cash donations for the Lincoln Hill subdivision through September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Alderman Santi?
I will make the motion as presented.
Seconded by Alderman Schaefer?
Seconded.
Last discussion on this item? Kelly, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Go the way.
I'll be there.
Next item on the agenda is staff reports, oh no, I apologize, there's not staff reports, just trying to get out of your quick access. Next item on the agenda is a quarterly financial report. Carolyn, can you please present that report?
I don't really have much more to add, other than so far for the year, we're looking about where we would expect for our expenses and revenues. Our sales tax running about fifty percent, income taxes are also just slightly under fifty percent, so everything from, our two base revenues are looking very well. Obviously, our property taxes have all, almost all come in by the end of the second quarter. Expense-wise, we, personnel costs are running at, running around fifty percent, which is really good, and other than that, everything, like I said, everything's running really well. If you have any questions, have any answers.
Any questions for Carolyn?
Is this pretty, is this pretty much through, like, current, like, all, there's, everything you've got, there's nothing that's, that has been put in here in the last few days or anything like that?
Well, it's through October thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
So...
All right, so it's not really six months then, total, right? Is this?
Yeah, six months, May to October.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Alderman Glab, sorry.
Yeah, just how does our results for this year compare to, let's say, last year and the year before, approximately? I mean, we pretty much about the same, the same vote as we were last year at this time?
Yeah, I mean, obviously we increased some of our revenues for the year, I think we did sales tax up three percent, so we're, we would be three percent higher than last year, but we're running at fifty percent of where we would expect to be for the time of year, so that's good, which is what we were doing last year, so we're keeping up with the pace.
So we're pretty much at the norm?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Charlie? Thank you, Carolyn. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Any staff reports? Chief?
Over the last couple of months, the twenty-second judicial court has been in the process of developing a new DUI court, much like our mental health court and much like our drug court that they run. So as part of that process, they went through the process of trying to select members for a foundational committee for developing that court, and Police Department's happy to say that Deputy Chief Walsh was selected to be the law enforcement representative for McHenry County, and they'll be starting that process as early as next week. The team will be traveling to Athens, Georgia, to take a four-day training on how to set this DUI court up, so we're very proud of Deputy Chief Walsh and his accomplishment to represent all of us in the county.
Awesome. Just quick kudos, I know it's only the first snowstorm of the year, but to John Schmidt and Bill Hobson and Park and Rec and Public Works staff and everybody else involved for, our snow plan didn't really take effect until next weekend, December first, but it went into effect pretty much early last night, and just the ability for the staff to adjust on the fly to something like that, and, and, you know, get through the job that they were able to do last night, you know, was, is really great, so I appreciate, thanks, pass it on to all, everybody in your staff, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is mayor and city council comments. I just publicly want to thank Pam Althoff for the dredging. She participated in that very heavily to get the Fox Waterway Agency to think about doing this project, and I think it's going to be an awesome project, but I wanted to publicly thank Pam Althoff, because if it wasn't for her, I think we'd be a few years out, so.
think about doing this project, and I think it's gonna be an awesome project, but I wanted to publicly thank Pam Althoff, 'cause if it wasn't for her, I think, uh, we'd be a few years out, so. So I just wanted to publicly say that. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have. Any city council comments? Alderman Schaefer?
I just want to publicly mention that, uh, the city lost a great, um, person with, uh, Mr. Doherty. A lot of people know him as Donald P. He's been a friend of my family since birth and actually encouraged me to do this, um, a long time ago. But, uh, obviously he was a mayor here, a city councilman, or not a city councilman, but a county, uh, representative as well, and a great, uh, citizen for McHenry. We're gonna miss him.
Any other city council comments? No. At this time, looking for a motion to adjourn? Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion to adjourn, seconded by Alderman Condon.
Kelly, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
For adjourn.
Thank you. Great job, Kelly.
Reminder, another week?